Let's call a meeting to order. And will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance and then please stay standing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to have a moment of silence, not only for our neighbors and friends in the St. Louis community that were affected by the storms on Friday, but those in Oklahoma and other parts of the nation that have lost their lives in this terrible weather that we've been having. Let's have a moment of silence.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Irving?
Here.
Councilmember Burkett?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember O'Mara? Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Stanger?
Here.
Councilmember Quinn?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a forum.
Thank you.
I move for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of May 21st, 2013.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Journal is approved. Bid openings? We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to communication.
Madam Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so I'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number 1, 6th District.
So ordered.
What are you gonna do with it before you order it?
Receive and file. I'm way ahead of myself. Receive and file.
Okay, so ordered.
Sorry about that. Didn't mean to do your job there for you. Sorry about that. I had two years ago in my head.
Item number 2, 6th District.
Please hold. I won't order it.
So ordered.
Bridge matters. Item number 1, 1st, 3rd, 5th, and 6th districts.
Receive, file, contract an amount not to exceed $570,620 be awarded to Pace Construction Company, LLC, the lowest responsive bidder as recommended, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Item number 2, 3rd and 5th districts.
Receive, file, plan, specification, and detailed estimate of cost be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending Missouri Department of Transportation concurrence as requested, and a copy of the report be sent to the interested parties.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to other communications. Item number 1.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 2, 1st District.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 3, 2nd District.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 4, 5th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 5, 5th District.
Receive, file, and refer to the county councilor, to the Department of Planning, to the Department of Revenue, and to the Board of Election Commissioners.
So ordered.
Item number 6, 5th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 7, 4th District. Receive, file, and the change of order be approved as requested. I'm sorry. The change of order be approved as requested.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 8, 6th District.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Item number 9, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the temporary expansion of premises be approved as requested.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 10.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 11, all districts.
Receive, file, and refer to the St. Louis County Auditor, and that will be the order.
Item number 12.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 13, 2nd District.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 14, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 15, all districts.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 16, 1st District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Same motion for number 17.
All right, so ordered.
Item number 18, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 19, all districts.
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number 27, District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and a copy of this report be sent to the City of Eureka.
So ordered. Do we have any add-ons this evening? Mr. County Executive, we have a report.
Madam Chair, we have a report on the storm. In St. Louis County, the communities that was impacted was Maryland Heights, Maryland Heights Riverport, Parred, Earth City, unincorporated, Briston, Hazelwood, Lament Field of the City of St. Louis, Berkeley, Ferguson, Dalewood, Hathaway Manor South, unincorporated, Molly Acres, Belle Fountain Neighbors, and the Spanish Lake area that is unincorporated. We believe there's about 226 residences impacted, eight houses in unincorporated county no longer is able to live in. There are 50 businesses impacted. FEMA and SEMA to survey damages on Wednesday, June the 5th, have established a debris tran for limbs and vegetation, clean up the unincorporated areas to get limbs to the curb by Monday, June the 10th, and pick up between June the 20th and the 21st. Have a Red Cross shelter in Florissant, Eagan. On Saturday night, we had 15 people that used this shelter workshop, used this shelter in Florissant, and on Sunday, we believe it was eight people that used it. And the Salvation Army provided food and water throughout North County, so did the Red Cross as well. And MRE is working hard to restore the power. Now, we believe we're down to about 9,500 customers out of 90,000 over the weekend that's left to be done. Hopefully, that should be done by this time tomorrow. That's not a complete report, but that's what we have at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. County Executive. We have no reports of special committees this evening, so we will move to the public forum. I believe, I think there's about 14 speakers. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, so that everyone has a chance to share. And the first speaker is Reverend Larry Rice. And by the way, Reverend, I have your note here, but I haven't been able to read it yet.
Thank you. In front of you, each one of you received a letter, and that letter's in reference to the fact that we want to make available ground to St. Louis County to open a shelter. I believe that when you made a statement that you want to open a shelter for the homeless, and it's sincere, but I think the problem is, is if we're waiting on the federal government to provide the money with the problems they have, we're going to be waiting a long time. And that's why I've talked to our Board of Directors, and they've agreed to make available two lots on Lata Avenue. And it's 3950 Lata Avenue. It's off a natural bridge. It's in an unincorporated area. My vision for that is, is a shelter that would accommodate anywhere from 25 to 35 women and children. It would be Phase 1. Just since I've mentioned that, it's been interesting. I, out of the blue, had Elder One contracting in Fenton, Missouri, Randy Van Winkle contacted us and said he'd help put up a roof on such a shelter. And I believe that there are other groups out there that would do that. So in order to really get this moving, I believe that we're going to have to just go to the general public and ask them to do their part, and I think that we can get this built. That'd be the first one. The second one we have envisioned is one that's needed for men from St. Louis County. They would accommodate 50 to 75 men. And just real quickly is that by being an all-night shelter like we are, 1411 Locust, we're under a tremendous amount of pressure at the present time. I have not seen a summer where we've had so many homeless women, children, and men, veterans, coming in at this time. It's putting a lot of pressure on the downtown businesses, on the neighbors, on our work as a whole. So we definitely need to have St. Louis County do this, and we want to help you any way we can.
Well, thank you, Reverend, and I would like to say just thank you, not only for myself, but as a member of this council, because I think you are aware that this is very important to me. But the issue has been trying to locate someplace to put a shelter, and the county has, because they've been looking in my council district. So I know there has been research done on this, and it has been difficult. It's been expensive. What we think we could use has turned out to be way, way more than we can afford. So I can applaud you on being willing to come forward with a location. And I assume, Mr. County Executive, is there someone he should be talking to?
Well, we will look into it, and we'll see what the problems...
You have phone numbers in here you can contact, and you can get the county attorneys in touch with our attorneys, and we can do the process after that. Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I make a brief announcement about the development in my area?
Yes.
If anybody's here from the 6th District and is planning to speak this evening, I want to let you know that I'm hosting a town hall meeting. The subject matter of that town hall meeting is going to be the residential senior development that is located on Telegraph Road, and I'm having this meeting on June 7th, Friday, from 6:30 to 8:30 at Oakville High School in the main auditorium, the main gym. And I look forward to seeing you there, and certainly if you have comments tonight, that's very fine as well. I just wanted to make you aware of that meeting.
All right. Thank you. The next speaker is Barbara McCain, McCann. And after Barbara
I reside at New Life, and I was originally from LeMay. I owned a home, and I'm just saying that there are no places here to get any help in the county if you lose your home or whatever. If you have children, you have nowhere to take them. If you don't have any family. It's just, it's just real hard for these women to come all the way away from their neighborhoods, from people they know. And, you know, when these women come into the city from the county, they're scared. It's a totally different way of life, the city is, from the county. And it's not fair to them that there is no place to take them if they need to. And I just think, you know, that you should consider that, you know, these people, you know, out in the county, they need help, you know, instead of having to drag their children all the way to the city. They take them away from their schools, you know. It's just a totally different way of life for them, and it's very unfair to the children that there's no place to take them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Please.
Let me ask a question on that. That's right. What I want to say is, I'm going to make a statement. The statement you indicate there's no place in the county for people to go, that's not true. There may be field, but there are places to go in St. Louis County, just like there are places to go in the City of St. Louis that are filled as well. Now, there's not enough places, that's a fact. But I do want to be clear, there are places in St. Louis County where families can go that are homeless, but I'm not saying that they're not filled, but there are places available. You made this statement, there is no place to go in St. Louis County.
I didn't know there was.
I'm just saying that's not a true statement. Thank you.
Well, part of the problem is, is because they're over, there's too many. Yes. So, all right. Thank you for your comments. Virginia King, and then Candace Fox.
Good evening. I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I wound up here, totally surprised by all of this, but grateful for it. I'm a flood victim. I was staying in a basement shelter that was provided to me free because I'm a breast cancer survivor relocating back home near the San Luis and looking for a job. In the process of having this blessing given to me, here comes the flood, and I have about maybe 10, 11 inches of muddy water in my window. It's flooding in, flooding my apartment. And even after the flood and the rainstorms are over, the place is too musty, nasty, stinky, dangerous to live in, and I'm trying to find a place to go. And if there is a place in Arnold, I don't know about it, couldn't find it, I was told to come to St. Louis. So, I'm from Arnold. I've come to the shelter here, actually today, from Arnold because I couldn't find any place else to go. It's the closest place I could find. And there's definitely a need for more shelters out there, and I think that anybody who can help, you know, especially women, children, men, it doesn't matter, people with medical conditions such as myself, you know. If it wasn't for my doctors at Barnes here, you know, in San Luis and stuff, I wouldn't have even chose to come here. I probably would have had to go to a different place even farther off. But I just want to thank you for your time and hope that you do, that you do vote yes for this, because it's something that's definitely needed.
Let me ask you a question. Are you from Jefferson County? Barnes in Jefferson County?
I was originally from San Luis.
But you live in Jefferson County.
But I was given a free, well, not free, a loaned basement apartment to stay in while I seek temporary housing, or while I seek housing and employment because of my medical condition. I've been sick. I have swollen lung nose. I've been having problems from it. And in any case, in the process of staying there, there's one tornado, and the storms hit, and I find myself with nowhere to go, you know. I moved back here from Arkansas. I'm originally from San Luis, like I said, and I have no, I have nowhere to go. I'm scared, you know. I don't know what to do. I see these people out here on the street. They're huddled by trees, you know, in alleys, in, in public places, because there's no place for them to go. And it made me scared that I was going to wind up on that. I've never had to live like that in my life, and, you know, I can't believe that I'm going through this now. But I'm grateful for the shelter, and I pray to God that, you know, that you see fit to provide more shelters out there for people like me and others. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Candace Fox, and then Carolyn Clay.
Good evening. I used to live in North County. I'm not homeless. I've never been homeless in my life. I used to drive trucks over the road, and I got sick, ended up in the hospital. Now, I called the shelters out of the county that were, or probably numbers that they took me to call, and everyone said, oh, we're full, we're full, we're full. The hospital ended up just putting me in a taxi and sending me down to the city. That's how they're doing it, just putting people in taxis and sending them down to evangelists, et cetera. And we drastically need, we really have, drastically. Because, like I said, women and children, they come down there, are crying. Their kids, they get there, they get scared. They have nowhere to go, and the people are just Mr. Rick. They don't know what to do. There's a lot of people, and the homeless aren't violent or anything like that. They just have nowhere to go, and they need a place to go. It's drastically, drastically, drastically needed. So if you see in your hearts to build a few shelters for more shelters out there so that people can go to, we would really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let me make a statement, because I guess that seems to be a misconception that the government agencies in the greater metropolitan area all operate a shelter, and that's not true. None of them do. No government agency that I know of in the area operate a permanent shelter. I'm not saying we can't. I'm just saying none does on a 24-hour, seven-days-a-week basis. None does. So I'm just saying, it's not just the St. Louis County. It is St. Charles County, the City of St. Louis, it's Jefferson County, Franklin County. None of the counties operate a permanent shelter. So I want to be clear about this. So I'm not saying that St. Louis County is some county unto itself that we don't want to not doing it. No. None of the government agencies operate a permanent shelter anyplace in the greater metropolitan area, to my knowledge.
What I wasn't saying was that it runs one. I'm just saying that we need to build some more out there to have people go to instead of everyone swarming to the city because out in the county, they, you call places, and they tell you we're full, we're full, we're full. And then they send them all downtown, and then downtown will get full, and then that's when you have nowhere to go. We really need more shelters out and help.
One of the things that we're looking at is, quite frankly, is looking at partnering with the existing facilities to expand those services, if that's possible. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. We just want to revat the service.
True.
Okay.
And that's what we're doing.
That's one of the things we're looking at, is how can we expand it, not reinvent it, not build a new building, but existing services, how can we partner with those individuals or those not-for-profits that is actually doing the work, have the expertise to do it, and to partner with them to make it work? That's what we're looking at. Okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Carolyn Clay, and then Tracy Addison.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you tonight?
Good.
I'm here from New Life Evangelist, et cetera. And I've worked in New Life since 1990. And I worked, I started in the office, worked in the accounting office for about a year, and they threw me out of there. God had another plan. I ended up overseeing the women's shelter, and I've seen a lot of women, a lot of children, and women that come through there. There is a need. There is a big need. We don't want you to reinvent the wheel. We just, we want emergency shelter, because we get a lot of calls. We get calls from people that are just passing through. I had a call from this one lady, and she called me on the phone. I don't know how she got New Life's number. She was on Highway 70. I said, where are you at on Highway 70? I said, get to a service station. So she went to the service station. I said, I had to talk her through that thing. She was so scared. She said somebody had stole her money, and she was out in St. Louis County on Highway 70, and she was, well, she was in St. Charles. She was in St. Charles, and she went to 5th Street. I talked to the cashier, and I said, she's trying to get to New Life. We're talking about emergency shelter. We're talking about emergency shelter. Shelter that would be open for people to come in anytime. That's what we're talking about. Not the shelter you call the 802-544 number, and they say, hold on, I've called it. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about an open door for people to come when they're sick and have nowhere to go, have no medical insurance, have no, no type of insurance through these floods, no rental insurance. Their house has been condemned. They lost their job with nowhere to go. Where they come? They come to New Life. I tell them, call. Call at 8 o'clock. Call at 2 o'clock. Call at 6 o'clock. They come back to me, and they say they've called. I say, go over there and sit at 800 North Tucker. And they come back to us with children, with nowhere to go. But we, we take them in. I know Reverend Rice is not the best, but he is an advocate for people being on the street. I've seen it. I wouldn't lie to you. Wouldn't lie to none of you. I've seen it.
That's three minutes, Madam Chair.
I thank you. I thank you for your hearts of compassion. I thank you for this one nation. You say, one nation under God. The God I serve is a God of love and compassion and mercy. That's the God we should be serving, as one nation under God.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Tracy Addison?
Pass.
I'm sorry, pass. Jennifer, is it Jennifer Byrd? Teresa Stone?
Are you Jennifer Byrd? Yes, I am.
Are you Jennifer?
I am.
All right. Come on up.
I can't believe somebody can't hear my voice.
Thank you for taking my comments. I have concerns about, I think it's Bill 103, and it's on page 17 of your agenda here. It's authorizing and directing the county executive to execute and deliver an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the economic council of St. Louis County, the City of St. Louis, and St. Louis Development Corporation. Concern in combination of existing SLEC and SLDC, business development, business finance, entrepreneurial support services, and so forth. This smells like city-county merger to me. I have very, very serious concerns about this. I'm just curious why we think we need to combine these two entities, specifically with relation to business. I don't know if you're aware, I would hope that you are, because I know that city-county merger is on the minds of this council, but there is a report. It's 196 pages. I'm hopeful that you've all read it. I would like to ask you if you have read it. I think that it's an important tool. It's been a tool for me. But there are a number of things that I'd like to highlight here. Let's see, on page 6 of the City of St. Louis and St. Louis County Intergovernmental Collaboration Study from February 16th, 2011, done by the PFM Group out of Pennsylvania. Page 6 reads, "Economic Development. There is across the country a growing acceptance of the need to," excuse me, "the need for jurisdictional competition to be replaced by cooperation for economic development." I beg to differ. Competition spurs excellence. Competition is what gets some people into better colleges than others. Competition also produces more results, and it produces good behavior, and it encourages low cost. So cooperation is great, but this isn't kumbaya. This is a free-market system. So I think that that needs to be considered. In this report, it's filled with a lot of information that, I mean, we're looking at budgets from St. Louis County compared to St. Louis City for things like, well, let's just say, take parks and recreation, for example, and you would find that on page 73 of this report. We've got the City of St. Louis with 3,200 acres of parks and land to maintain and a budget of $33 million. That comes out to $10,300 a year per acre for maintenance versus what the county spends, and so I'd like to say thank you for doing a good job on this, 12,000 acres, so almost four times the acreage of the city, and a budget of $26.3 million for maintenance. So that comes out to just almost $2,200 a year per acre for maintenance. I think it's critical that we stop merging, and specifically with business, you're going to chase businesses out of the area entirely. We've got Neuter Corporation, left the city, moved to Fenton. Hotly Cheese, left the city, moved to Fenton. You merge these business development councils, and you're going to send the wrong message to business, and they're going to leave the area completely. I know of two businesses, small businesses personally, that I'm involved in by friends or personally myself, that are looking for area in the county to leave the city. I'm telling them, you better wait and see what's happening. I got one of them looking in Barnhart. So if you want to continue to chase business away, then you'll continue the merge, but I would recommend that you take it into consideration and stop. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Teresa Stone. And after Teresa is, is it Lisa Panetti or Panet?
Thank you for taking my comments. I read the same report that Jennifer is referring to. I'm a 40-plus-year resident of St. Louis County. I grew up in the county. I live in Florissant. There's talk about flight from the city to the county. If this goes through, if these businesses join, if the governments join, if the city merger happens, city-county merger happens, you're going to see county flight like you haven't seen before. It's in the best interest of the county to stay separate from the city. I ask that you do not perfect this bill any further. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa. And after Lisa is Lloyd Sloan. And after Lisa is Lloyd Sloan?
First of all, I want to state that I'm here on a coalition of churches, which I always represent first and foremost. And within this part that you guys are talking about, the county and the city merging, there is merging the Sustainability Plan within that. And on page 111 of the Sustainability Plan says, "Celebration of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender questioning lifestyles through St. Louis events and venues and support centers." So, in other words, using our tax money to support this agenda. And the churches in St. Louis County are adamantly opposed to this and want me to speak out against it. There are many other things in the Sustainability Plan, which I don't understand why you would want to support, such as getting rid of our cars, which are in here. And I think everybody seems to like their cars within St. Louis County. So, I'm not understanding why we're wanting to get rid of drive-through facilities in neighborhoods, making those a low priority. And to quote the St. Louis Sustainability Plan, which all of these are in page numbers, "Forget the damn car and build the cities for lovers and friends." And I'm not understanding why St. Louis County is participating in getting rid of our cars and a celebration of the gay lifestyle, establishing a cradle-to-college incentives for jobs. Why are you wanting to take our children from cradle to grave? I'm not understanding. As a parent, you have children because you want to raise them, not because you want the government to. On page 141, establishing no car zones and outfitting cars with GHD tracking. This is also a cap-and-trade program. Isn't that for the federal government, not for the local government, to establish a cap-and-trade program? And even on page 141, it says minimize the use of small-engine lawn care equipment. So, you're going after our lawn mowers. You want to increase rates for parking, which is on page 160 of the St. Louis Sustainability Plan, and allow people to rely primarily on non-car transportation, which is on page 162, again, of the St. Louis Sustainability Plan. You want us to establish higher thresholds of energy performance than international standards. Okay, so you want us to be better than everyone else internationally, page 188. And what do you think that's going to cost the county? I mean, all these things you're talking about, passive temperature and ventilation control on page 190, that's talking about no air conditioning. Others called forced. That's what that's called. That's called forced temperature control and ventilation when you have air conditioning. Passive is when you open up the window and hope it cools off.
You're out of time, so you want to wrap it up?
Okay. And so, my real question is, have you guys even read the Sustainability Plan? I have, that's right here. And if you have, I'd like to hear some defending of why you're supporting this plan and all the things I just mentioned with page numbers. Thank you.
Just as a comment, in case anybody was not aware, this county passed an anti-discrimination ordinance back, when was it, Pat, that we passed it, in the fall?
Uh, yes, December.
So, you're already living in a county that has an anti-discrimination ordinance. Lloyd Sloan? And after Lloyd is Ray, is it Clitney, Clitning? I'm sorry.
Thank you. Lloyd Sloan, I'm from West County. My concern was also, I had lots of questions concerning the bill that I guess will be voted on tonight, the ordinance, Bill 103, authorizing, directing the county executive to execute and deliver an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Economic Council of St. Louis County, the SLCEC, the City of St. Louis, the CITY, not sure what that stands for, the St. Louis Development Corporation, SLDC, to combine the existing SLCEC and SLDC Business Development, Finance, and Entrepreneurial Services, prescribing and performing, approving the form detailed said cooperation agreement, authorizing other related actions in connection with the implementation of said cooperation agreement. I couldn't imagine anything be more clear, so I think my questions are pretty much answered from that. I don't know if you all have seen another plan. It's from the St. Louis Universal Sustainable Hegemony Plan, a very recent, otherwise known as SLUSH. Their plan, I thought, was very promising. It was to merge the city and county, of course, then taxing the county and subsidizing the city. I can't imagine anything give more growth to the county than that. But, and also to control all business, making sure they get approval for anything they want to do from government councils such as these. That was their plan for increasing economic growth between the city and the county. It seems clear to me that that plan seems to already be incorporated in what I see here that's going to pass tonight. And I'm not asking you to necessarily endorse the SLUSH plan, but I think, you know, as long as you don't criticize it in any way, I'll take that as your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray, and then Tom Sullivan?
Have we talked about the Walmart situation?
You can talk about whatever you'd like to, and forgive me for mispronouncing your last name.
No, that's not a problem, okay? I'm here on behalf of the Walmart being built on Butler Hill and Highway 21. I sent everybody a copy of a letter. Did you receive that from me? I gave it to the Building Commission, they said you would get that.
I didn't.
No?
Did you get them?
Well, I gave it to the panel also on May 6.
You're talking about the Planning Commission?
Planning Commission.
Oh, okay.
And they said they'd make sure that you were to get them.
Well, at this point, we haven't received it.
I can't go over all of it because of leaving all the time. But last meeting we had here on May the 6th is the, the, or the people that were here voted this down, that they did not want the Walmart, we wanted to keep that a C2 area, where, you know, it's a normal, when I say normal business hours from 8:00 in the morning till 4:00, 5:00 of the evening. It's a residential area. The Walmart will bring a tremendous amount of traffic. It will create havoc with jobs, and we are, we have enough food service industries in our neighborhood without going anymore. So, I just wanted, so you haven't read that, I can certainly get you another copy, but it'll be too late, correct? So, anyway, that's all I have.
Madam Chair, may I address this council? Sir, this evening, that matter was in my district. And there was a recommendation, as you said, that was voted down, a recommendation of a denial. And this evening, I received and filed that denial, which means that the matter, and it was so ordered, so that means that the matter was denied. I confirm, through my receive and file, I confirm the denial. So, the matter will be, should be over.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Tom Sullivan?
Thank you.
And then Tony Grasso?
Madam Chair, members of the council, Bill 113 would allow the county to lend up to $400 million of surplus funds to the Metro Transit Agency that have been collected from Proposition 8. The 100% tax increase in 2010 was never really needed. In 2008, voters rejected the tax for Metro despite the usual threats and deception. The crisis was then manufactured despite Metro receiving records amounts of funding. Service was decreased, so there was no need to do so except to threaten voters. Of course, County Executive Charlie Dooley took part in the deception. Voters were told unless the tax hikes passed, the disabled would not have transportation. Workers could not get to their jobs, and economic development in the area would be held back. You might recall all the people in wheelchairs that Metro bust into council meetings. Funding really wasn't needed, so much is now being collected that there will be $400 million of surplus funds that can be loaned. Despite billions of dollars of increased spending on public transportation and nearly 20 years of MetroLink, only a little more than 1% of the population in St. Louis County use public transit to get to their jobs. This council and previous councils have failed for years to provide oversight for Metro. The most obvious example is the cross-county MetroLink extension, the biggest boondoggle this area has ever seen. The total cost for taxpayers is $1.1 billion, nearly $150 million a mile. I have said for years that the county council needs a full-time person just to audit and report to the council on Metro finances and operations. You certainly can't believe the people that run the transit agency. I urge you to include such a position as part of the loan agreement. I would also urge you to be careful in approving the agreement unless you fully understand it. It is a complicated financial involvement that could have implications you are not aware of. It should be of concern that the county would not be, that the county would be unable to amend, change, modify, or terminate the loan agreement on its own. All parties would have to be in agreement, and would have to be done in compliance of Article 10 of the indenture. Do you understand how this would work? In a May 6th letter to the County Executive Director of Administration Pamela Reach says the loan would be made, quote, "with the understanding that loan monies would be returned to the county when federal funding for a new capital program became available." This and other aspects of the loan agreement could use some explaining. It isn't at all clear that the county tax dollars are being protected. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I was going to say something, so be it. Tony Grasso? And then, Tony, excuse me just one minute. There were two other people that had signed up to speak for Walmart. Are they still here, or did they?
I think they left, Madam Chair.
Did they leave?
I think they left.
Okay, all right, okay, I'm sorry, Tony.
Could I possibly have one of those slots to speak at the meeting?
No, no.
Even if I'm on my best behavior?
No, you have to sign up for the meeting.
I got stuck in traffic. 6:00 is tough.
Right.
Good evening, Tony Grasso, real estate developer by trade, tax lawyer by training. I have an LLM in taxation in Washington U. First of all, I am in full support of the development on Telegraph Road. That is exactly the kind of development we need, and we're going to need a lot more of it. I'm in full support of everyone's vote on that. However, with that, I think the better location logistically and real estate tax-wise would have been this strip of ground that's part of Cliff Cave Road, or Cliff Cave Park that goes out to Telegraph Road. That property, as I understand it, was acquired from our family many years ago for access to Cliff Cave Park. It's never been developed, and I think that would have been a better location. And it will be a better location for the next development there. That's item one. Item two, I think I dropped a piece of paperwork off to your office. If I want to let you know, I have filed a request for sanctions against St. Louis County in my lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comment, introduction of bills.
Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Burkett, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $204,842 from the Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development, to provide employment and training services to laid-off, closest workers. Depositing and appropriating said monies is set forth herein, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary contracts, agreements, or other documents. Bill number 117, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with EFK-Moan LLC for consulting engineering services in connection with replacement of Conway Road Bridge number 206 over Maryville Creek AR-1277. Bill number 118, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the Curators of the University of Missouri-St. Louis for installation of lighting on a portion of the Ted Jones Trail. Bill number 119, introduced by Councilmember Quinn, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the Wyman Center Incorporated for lease of a 5.51-acre tract of land in Greensfelder Park. Bill number 120, introduced by Councilmember Burkett, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart a sum of $965,000 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund for the purchase of equipment for various police department facilities. Bill number 121, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a supplemental contract with Walter P. Moore &amp; Associates Incorporated for additional professional services relating to repairs to the north end of the Forts Building Garage, St. Louis County Public Works, number 12-007-OS. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Perfection of bills?
Bill number eight, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Bill number 103, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
Please hold, and that will be the order.
Bill number 108, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move to perfect Bill number 108.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Bill number 108 is perfected.
Bill number 109, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Bill number 110, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
I move to perfect Bill number 110.
Second.
Roll call, I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, Bill number 110 is perfected.
Bill number 111, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect Bill number 111.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number 111 is perfected.
Bill number 112, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
At this time, I move to perfect Bill number 112.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number 112 is perfected.
Bill number 113, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
At this time, I move to perfect Bill number 113.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained.
All right, may we have a roll call, please?
On the motion to perfect Bill number 113, Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Abstained.
Councilmember O'Meara? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
No.
Madam Chair, on that vote, there are four ayes, one abstention, one absent, and one no.
Motion carries, Bill number 113 is perfected.
Bill number 114, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
At this time, I move to perfect Bill number 114.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Motion carries, Bill number 114 is perfected.
Bill number 115, introduced by Councilmember Stanger.
I think you said 114.
I'm sorry. Bill number 115, introduced by Councilmember Stanger.
I move to perfect Bill number 115.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number 115 is perfected. Final passage of bills?
Bill number 105, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
I move for final passage of Bill number 105.
Second.
A roll call, please?
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 105, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 105 is finally passed.
Bill number 106, introduced by Councilmember Burkett.
I move for final passage of Bill number 106.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 106, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 106 is finally passed.
Bill number 107, introduced by Councilmember Stanger.
I move for final passage of Bill number 107.
Second.
A roll call, please?
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkett?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara? Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 107, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 107 is finally passed.
Madam Chair, we have no resolutions this evening, and we have nothing under unfinished business. And under new business, we have one prepared order.
I move for adoption of order number one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, order number one is adopted.
Move adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.